...and many other talents.
I came down with my friends to the Watts Festival to see Mr. Ray Bailey. If you've never heard of him, he's one of the best guitars in the world and the nicest man I ever met. And we're here to have a good time.
This is my first time here and I like it very much. I enjoy the music.
And it's first-time festival-goers or even first-time Watts visitors that event organizers want to appeal to. They want folks to know the music, the art, and the food of South LA are rich in flavor and history, just like its residents.
We don't have to go up north to see fine art. We can see fine art in our communities. We do this work so that our young people can be proud of themselves and proud of their community.
And events like the Watts Towers Jazz Festival are a chance to show off that pride and to share the heart and soul of Watts with others through the universal language of music. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of "LA This Week."
Good morning, good morning. It is Wednesday. It is Wednesday, November 14th. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
... Englander, Garcetti, Weesar, Carras, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale, Zine, West End, 13 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Krikorian moves. Mr. Rosendale seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Rosendale moves and Mr. Krikorian seconds.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue Item 12 to December 4, Item 17 to November 21, and Item 22 to December 5.
Without objection, that'll be the order. Mr. Englander.
Request to continue Item 13 to January 16.
Mr. Englander requests a continuation to January...was that the 13th?
16, sir.
16.
I'm sorry, sir. What was that date again for Item 13?
January 16th, Item 13.
Very good, sir.
Okay, let's move through the agenda. Could I please have quiet in the council chambers? Let's go through the agenda. Mr. Clerk, let's go through the first section.
Cards. Items 1 through 6 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, we're waiting for the sergeants to deliver the cards. Steve? We need the cards. We're going through the agenda. Specials members?
Mr. President, we've been advised there are no cards in for Items 1 through 6. No cards, sir.
Okay, well, let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, let's go through the next section.
Items 7 through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held. On Item 14, there are two reports for council's consideration. Further, we're awaiting a report for Item Number 7 from the Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee.
Okay, so we'll hold Item 14. And was it Item 7?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have Specials members? Mr. Zine? Eight called Special for Mr. Zine. Any other Specials? Let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Next?
Mr. President, Items 15 through 24 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items. And now before us, do you have cards?
No, sir, we do not.
Specials members? Specials on those items. Let us open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, next is what, Mr. Clerk? Item 25 and 6?
That is, Item 25, sir. It's an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
No, what I'd like to do is chat with the Budget Chair to see what is his desire where it relates to. So, Item 25, I'm told... So we'll hold Item 25.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Item called Special or general public comment.
Okay, we have one presentation today by Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, it's my honor to congratulate the Los Angeles Library Foundation on their 20th anniversary and to thank them for the vital work they do on behalf of our public libraries. Established in 1992, the Library Foundation was created by the private sector to support and benefit the Los Angeles Public Library. Over the past 20 years, the foundation has raised over $90 million, providing additional funding for literacy and cultural programs, tutoring and college preparation assistance, and equipping our libraries with the latest technology. Working as an independent fundraising organization, the foundation has been a close partner with all 73 Los Angeles Public Library branches. Thanks to their efforts, these branches can offer upgraded resources to everyone. When the city faced its most dire financial crisis with the threat of staff reductions and fewer library hours, the Library Foundation provided the campaign support to rally the community, to overwhelmingly support the motion introduced by Council Member Bernard Parks to restore hours and to pass Measure L and bring services back to the level that they had previously functioned. The foundation is dedicated to keeping the library open and thriving for generations to come. So I'm proud to congratulate them on 20 years of distinguished dedication and loyal service on behalf of the people of Los Angeles. We appreciate your partnership and take this opportunity to publicly thank all of you. And with me is John Zabo, our City Librarian, Ken Brechner, President of the Los Angeles Library Foundation, Rebecca Sheehy, Vice President of Advancement and Internal Affairs, and Katie Dunham, Communications Director. So, would you like to have your president speak?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Perry, and thank you to all of the council for this recognition and honor. The Library Foundation is devoted to exactly the same principles that are represented in this room. We are here and exist to support the most important, we feel, the most important ideas in a democracy, which gives everyone, everyone, access to information and the opportunity to read, to learn, to find a job, to become a citizen, to think about what it is that they can do to participate fully in our city. And there is a great partner for the Library Foundation who's standing behind me as well, and that's our City Librarian, John Zabo. Together, the foundation works with the public library in support of his vision, and we are honored to receive this recognition on our 20th anniversary. Thank you very much.
As City Librarian, I, of course, relish every opportunity to say thank you to the Library Foundation of Los Angeles for their tremendous work. And certainly today, I want to thank Councilmember Perry and the entire City Council for recognizing the important work that they do in our libraries. You know, it's easy when one thinks of the Library Foundation of Los Angeles to think of dollars, to think of maybe a notable name. But when I think about the Library Foundation of Los Angeles, I think about impact. I think about impact on the youngest in our community, the most vulnerable in our community, the work that they do and the services that they help us provide in emergent literacy, adult literacy, homework help, our collections, and all of the great work that the staff throughout the Los Angeles Public Library does every day. And so I give a very hearty and robust thank you to the Library Foundation and certainly thank you to Councilmember Perry for this recognition of them. Thank you so much.
I'd like to, Ms. Perry, call on Mr. Labange at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Perry, it's always good to stand for the library. The library, over 70 locations plus 73, and the great Central Library. And the foundation is the partnerships that's necessary, partnerships that we have to expand on. Thank you, Ms. Perry, for recognizing 20 years, how fast it's come, from the disaster of the fire, as you know, Mr. Garcetti, and the work that was done in collaboration with the downtown business community and others to do this. And the great thing is, with every foundation, there's also the wings of the Friends of the Library throughout every branch, that people are very concerned about helping their library. So I always want to show my library card. I wish I was in there more. And I want to salute my favorite book. You know what my favorite book is, Ken? Mike Mulligan and his steam shovel. He rebuilt the town of Poperville.
I've heard you do that.
Anyway, thank you very much, Jan, and the Library Foundation for all the millions of dollars and inspiration you give to so many to get to a library and find the right way to wherever they want to go. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendale.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back in 1999, I was in the cable business, and I was fortunate enough to hit up Adelphia Cable for a million bucks and for AT&amp;T for a million bucks and three programmers each for a quarter of a million. So I handed the Library Foundation $2.75 million, of which Dick Reardon got the main library named after him. I was playing one against the other, but the goal was the public-private partnership is essential. And the foundation exists for those folks who have the bucks. They should contribute to it if they believe in literacy and they believe that the preventive strategy for everything is a good education, a good opportunity. So I applaud the foundation for existing, for going out and raising funds. I was thrilled to be part of the process of raising some real money for you. And I say to anybody out there, if you've got a lot of money, give it to the Library Foundation and make it work, because we need more public-private partnerships. Jan, God bless you for bringing it to our attention today. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti.
I'll be very brief. I just want to stand in support as well and thank the Library Foundation. Actually, we wouldn't have passed Measure L were it not for you stepping up with the largest chunk of money. And that is something that restored library hours, restored services, and that wouldn't have happened without you. You do so much other good work that enriches people and brings people to libraries and have been able to participate in some of those programs, and they're incredible. But let it be said, and let no anniversary pass without that important accomplishment that the Library Foundation made possible, really laying the financial foundation for that campaign. So thank you again for that.
Ms. Perry.
Just to close again, for those who represent districts where there aren't a lot of options for children and their families, I again wanted to thank Mr. Parks for having the vision and the foresight to author the motion that led to Prop L and the passage. And thank you to the foundation for hearing our cry and our plea. And I think you might want to try to sign Mr. Rosendale up as your next fundraising chair. That was a very good appeal. And with that, thank you very much. Let's take one quick picture here. Where's the...yeah, oh, here she is. And then we'll go in the back. Everybody looks that way. We'll go in the back.
Thank you for that heads up. Mr. Weesar, you owed me anyway. At this point in time, I want to...Mr. Clerk, we're going to go to Item 14. That's correct, right, Mr. Weesar?
That's good with you.
And it's my understanding that we've already satisfied the public comment, but that we're going to do 20 minutes on both sides, a minute each?
Yes, if that's okay with you.
So we'll start out with the opposition. Ruben Gonzalez, Ron, I think it's Ron Saldana or Dana. Matt Coaded-Ginn. I can tell this is going to be a heck of a day for me.
Thank you, Council President, members of the City Council. My name is Ruben Gonzalez. I'm here representing the LA Area Chamber of Commerce and its 1,600 member businesses. I've had the honor of working inside this building and with the folks in this building for over 16 years, and never before have I seen a more cynical or surreal political proposal in that time. proposal in that time. That's what we have before us today. If we all stop for a second and put aside the political ramifications and simply looked at the policy initiatives here, it would be a no-brainer. Every stated policy goal in this discussion can be met with either a non-exclusive franchise system or an exclusive franchise system. The only difference is that with an exclusive franchise system, you will put out of business, potentially, 140 family-owned, multi-generational businesses. You will put out of jobs thousands of folks who work for them. We need to do better.
Thank you, Ruben. Okay, where's Ron? Okay, and then after Ron, I need Matt. I called three names. I want to see three folk. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council. My name is Ron Saldana. I'm the Executive Director of the Los Angeles County Disposal Association, representing the waste haulers and a lot of the other industry members and suppliers that supply the industry. I would just want to echo the remarks that were just said before me today, that we would hope that the City Council would do the right thing, do the right thing for the City of Los Angeles, don't do the political thing, save the politics for other issues, that let's do the right thing for the City of Los Angeles. Let's do an exclusive, a non-exclusive, commercial collection ordinance that will allow all of the environmental aspects that you want to have. We can put that in there, and something you're going to hear from today, and that is, you're going to start seeing more money into the general fund under this program. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. So, if I could have Matt, Joe Reisdorf, Melissa, Ron Silverstein, or Rob Silverstein? This is the way it works, guys. I call three names, three people come up. First person that gets to the mic speaks, and you are?
Joseph Reisdorf.
Okay, sir.
Max Comm Data Management. For many years, I worked with cities and counties throughout California on various solid waste franchising programs and rate-setting projects. Four key points I just wanted to mention quickly regarding the proposal before you today. Under an exclusive franchise system, businesses and apartment building owners will pay more for refuse service. The report issued by AECOM in January of this year, which, by the way, is the only report that compared actual costs of refuse service in cities with exclusive and non-exclusive franchise systems, indicated that a change to an exclusive system in the City of Los Angeles would cost businesses, property owners, and multifamily dwellers $67 million a year. Second fact, by selecting a franchise system, by selecting an exclusive franchise system other than a non-exclusive system, the city will be giving up on the opportunity to realize approximately $100 million in franchise fee revenue over the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, is there Matt, Rob Silverstein, Melissa, Gretchen Lewinsky? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Council President and Councilmembers. My name is Robert Silverstein, appearing on behalf of the Los Angeles County Disposal Association. I've passed out brief comments to you in advance, and let the record reflect that I will also be turning in additional comments and exhibits for the record. I'd like to speak to two issues briefly. Sequa, an environmental impact report is required. We strongly support that. The City Council can and must require an EIR for a franchise proposal. Keep the EIR requirement in that you are already recommending. Second, we support the non-exclusive franchise system. A voluntary non-exclusive can start before the five-year phase-out period expires. Haulers will opt in, generating significant revenue for the city, and that's what the city's own consultants' report says. Why would you ignore this revenue now and choose an exclusive model fraught with legal and practical uncertainty that risks putting my clients, longstanding small businesses with several thousand employees?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Out of business.
Thank you. Please come forward. And it's a Matt Coad... Hey, Paul, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Krikorian, could you help me with Matt again? You remember the last name? Just say it into the mic.
Matt Catanjan, please.
Matt, are you here? He might be outside. Okay, Melissa.
Good morning, members of the council. My name is Melissa Patack. I'm with the Motion Picture Association of America. At the outset, I want to thank the members of the council and their staff for the time you have spent with me and my colleagues to understand the specific operational requirements of the studios as well as their extraordinary diversion rates. We also appreciate the provisions in both the Department of Sanitation report and the CAO report that will treat on-location waste as construction and demolition waste. And I know I don't have to detail the thousands of jobs created in the motion picture industry and by motion picture production and the wide choices and the competitive incentives that take many of these jobs out of Los Angeles. We ask for your support to incorporate into the instructions to the city attorney the recognition that the specific operational requirements of the studios need to be considered and addressed as the waste sheds are created. I'm available for any questions, and again, thank you for the time you have spent on this issue.
Thank you. Gretchen, followed by Stuart Waldman, followed by Ann Williams.
Gretchen Lewowski, Fox Entertainment Group. Mr. President, council members, good morning. My name is Gretchen Lewowski, and I'm here representing Fox Studios. As you may know, Fox has been located in Century City since 1935, and throughout our long history in Los Angeles, we have attempted to be good corporate citizens and community members. We employ between 6,000 and 10,000 people. We're the largest employer in CD5. Our commitment to the city is rigorous programs to achieve the level of sustainability is second to none. News Corporation has been rated III as sustainability companies nationally, and we've achieved carbon-neutral status as of 2010. Our studio leads the way with two solar facilities, lead-certified buildings, hybrid production vehicles, biodiesel generators, and committed by all employees to seek ways to reduce our carbon footprint. Our diversion rate at studios is currently 87%, and we're aiming to increase that to 90. Let me gently remind you that our industry is responsible for nearly 200,000 direct jobs and $7 billion in California wages. I propose that you... Sorry. We'll go with the city attorney in looking at language for our waste shed.
Thank you, Gretchen. Stuart.
Hi, Stuart Waldman. I'm President of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, representing 380 businesses in the San Fernando Valley who've created over 100,000 jobs. VICA supports the establishment of a non-exclusive waste franchise system and strongly opposes an exclusive system. As the CAO report points out, a non-exclusive system would enable the city to regulate waste haulers without limiting competition. For businesses, the non-exclusive franchise method allows small haulers to compete for business and customers to negotiate for the best rates. Conversely, an exclusive franchise limits competition, forces small haulers out of the city and potentially out of business, and drives up prices for customers. Despite the impartial recommendation of the CAO, which concurs with these points, this council process thus far has been manipulated by politics and negligent of the environmental and economic objectives of a franchise system. I urge you to not adopt an exclusive franchise.
Nicole Shaheenian, May Lee, Marsha Cox.
Carol Schatz, President of the Central...
Carol?
Yes.
I don't have a card.
I'm here for Ann Williams, who is my staff.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Carol Schatz, President of Central City Association. I'm here to urge you to adopt a non-exclusive franchise. There is no reason to adopt an exclusive franchise. It is not in the best interest of the city. It is not your business to help labor organize an industry and put a few thousand people out of work and reduce the number of companies that are operating. The system works, and there's no reason to change it. We urge you to do what is best for the city, because when those contract negotiations come with the few exclusives labor unions that are going to be responsible for running these franchises, we're going to see trash piling up on the street when you don't meet an unreasonable contract demand of theirs. This is not in the city's best interests. Do what is right for the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. So, do we have Nicole Shaheenian, May Lee, Marsha Cox, Beverly Kenworthy, Jim Clark? Ron Boden? Yes, you are.
Martha Cox Nittickman, with the Building Owners and Managers Association. Thank you so much for letting, for having this hearing. BOMA strongly opposes an exclusive franchise system and supports a non-exclusive program. Office buildings require special attention from our haulers, who understand what we do and are capable of meeting our unique demands. An exclusive franchise would take away our right to choose our hauler and negotiate our rates. Adopting a non-exclusive franchise will allow the city to achieve its policy goals while maintaining lower rates. According to the city's assessment, a non-exclusive agreement would allow the city to institute the clean fleet, zero-waste, workplace safety, and living wage policies that it is seeking. There are no unique policy or fiscal benefits of adopting an exclusive franchise system. Further, non-exclusive franchise will generate revenue now while providing the city time to fully explore the environmental and economic impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please come forward.
Beverly Kenworthy, Executive Director of the California Apartment Association here in Los Angeles. California Apartment Association, Los Angeles, strongly opposes an exclusive franchise. The pressure this will put on our landlords and tenants alike is unprecedented in this city. Our members who have properties outside of Los Angeles in areas with exclusive franchises report that their prices are 50% to 100% more than what they pay in Los Angeles, and their services are much declined. We believe that there has not been any independent study on the purported environmental benefits of an exclusive franchise. This is why an environmental impact report is imperative for us to really understand what the impacts are going to be. We urge you very strongly to support an environmental impact report before any policy decision is made on a non-exclusive franchise or an exclusive franchise. Thank you.
Thanks. Jim, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, members of the City Council, for this opportunity. My name is Jim Clark, and as you know, I'm the Executive Director of the Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. We represent the mom-and-pop landlords of this city, mostly, most of them subject to the rent stabilization ordinance or rent control, as you know, and that, right there, is part of our problem. If we go to an exclusive franchise with trash haulers and have fees forced upon us, we are probably going to see an increase in our rates. We cannot pass those down to the residents who actually produce the trash. That's problem number one. We lose the right to do, to create our own contracts and negotiate our own deals, number two. Number three, a lot of our businesses are very unique. They were built some in the 1920s, right up to the sidewalk. They don't have places to put some of these bins, so some of them would have to be excluded from the particular hauler that might not be able to produce the services that these particular buildings need.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Sir.
Thank you.
Are you Ron Boden?
I am, yes.
Okay, Ron.
Morning. I'm Ron Boden. I'm General Manager at Park LeBrea Apartments. As the second-largest department community in the United States, Park LeBrea has waste hauling needs that are extremely demanding, broad and highly specialized. We can't afford to see the city switch to an exclusive franchise system, because losing control of our waste services, as well as our ability to negotiate rates, would be a huge detriment to the business, which has operated in Los Angeles for generations. It would also hurt our residents who depend on us to coordinate their trash pickup. We support adopting a non-exclusive franchise system, which will allow the city to achieve its policy priorities while maintaining the competition that keeps waste hauling and recycling rates for consumers and businesses affordable. The city has an opportunity to act in the best interest of the environment, residents, and businesses, while generating critically needed revenue for the city by adopting a non-exclusive franchise. The City of Los Angeles has an opportunity to preserve jobs, support small business, protect the environment, and bolster our economy by adopting a non-exclusive franchise agreement for multifamily and commercial waste. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Astor, David England, Harold Greenberg, Michael Millman? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. My name is Kelly Astor. For 29 years, I've represented waste haulers. I appear in front of you today on behalf of the Los Angeles County Waste Management Association. It's been estimated that our members have 85% of the market share in the commercial sector. As with the smaller haulers, we support a non-exclusive franchise system. Three critical points I'd like to make very quickly. One, I understand the city attorney has concluded that the five-year law requires a five-year delay in implementing a non-exclusive franchise. Not true. I'm an expert on that law. It originated with my office. I represented the sponsor of the bill that created it. The system, if it's non-exclusive, can be rolled out immediately. Secondly, far too little attention's being paid to San Diego, Long Beach, and their experience in rolling out non-exclusive without so much as a problem. Finally, whatever else you folks decide today, exclusive or non-exclusive, you've got a number of incumbent haulers that have earned the right to do business there. I implore you, please, find a way that these incumbent legacy haulers with three generations in the community will be enrolled in the new program as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. And you are, sir? State your name.
I'm David England, representing the L.A. County Business Federation. Good morning. BizFed represents over 100 business organizations, including more than 69,000 business owners within the City of Los Angeles. We applaud the city's environmental and workplace safety goals, and we want to emphasize that eliminating competition and choice from our waste collection does nothing to strengthen L.A.'s recycling and environmental standards. In fact, rates and competition will result in a more successful program. A non-exclusive franchise would achieve the city's environmental goals without forcing stifling rates on our businesses. That would be a win-win for all parties. Additionally, it's vital that you understand all of the environmental and economic impacts before you take a position on this issue, so we urge you to conduct a complete environmental impact report before moving forward. The city must act in the best interests of its residents and businesses. We urge you to support a non-exclusive franchise, which will serve the needs of our community and achieve the city's objectives without raising costs on job-creating businesses in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Harold, followed by Michael, followed by Frederick Al Schuler.
Harold Greenberg, Agla. Gentlemen, Roosevelt said many years ago, "The only thing to fear is fear itself," and we all remember Communist Russia, "Vote straight Communist. The life you save will be your own." And that's exactly where we are here today. Essentially, this is saying that owners and tenants don't have the ability to negotiate and make their own contracts. We're making government decisions, knocking out competition, knocking out the mom-and-pops, and what are we afraid of? We've got to look at this. How are we going to work with our tenants when this imposes the obligation on the tenants and the owners rather than on the waste haulers? Where it should be is, frankly, the recycling on the part of the waste haulers. We can't look at mobs, and we can't say, "Mite is right." We want justice. We want it now, and we're tired of the BS.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael.
Good morning. I come here to thank everyone around this horseshoe for the privilege over the last several years of appearing before you. This is the day that justice and democracy died, when you let one woman take control of trash hauling. She's got the airport, she's got the parks, she's got the harbor, she's got the public employees. Now she's going to take trash from you, she's going to tell you what to do and what to vote. I love this city more than I can tell you. I love coming down here, but my words will be hollow, because I don't control her power with her union. This is union trash. It's very clear. It just piles up on New York when you have a union that controls and takes it over. Stop it now. We need to have our democracy back. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you... Shh. Hey, hey, let's keep it down. Are you Kelly?
No.
You are?
I'm Al Schuler.
Okay, Frederick. You'll be the last speaker.
Very briefly, it's pretty clear, particularly on the basis of past experience, that if the city agrees to, adopts, an exclusive franchise procedure, costs are going to significantly increase. Since providing low-income housing is an extremely highly regulated... Since providing low-income housing is an extremely highly regulated industry, I presume that in fairness, if the city requires that the apartment owners incur this additional expense, it will be allowed to be passed on to tenants. So how come nobody's talking about the rights of low-income tenants in this city? They're the ones who are going to be hurt by this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that time has expired for those opposed. Everyone who filled in a card, your card will be placed into the record. And I do want to recognize my dear friend Reverend Gaddis is here, and you just kind of got under the, you didn't make the cut. I didn't know that you were here, but it's good to see you. Now, we're going to begin with those in support, starting out with Adriana Martinez, Carla Campos, Ashley Coff. If you could please come forward, whoever gets to the mic first, just go right ahead. Identify yourself and go.
Good morning. My name is Adrian Martinez, and I'm here on behalf of the Natural Resources Defense Council. I'm here today to support moving forward with the policy framework for an exclusive franchise. It is the right move for the city of Los Angeles. I'm also here as a member of the Don't Waste L.A. Coalition. We have hundreds of members here today to support moving forward with this exclusive franchise, some people in the chambers right here and some, many, in the overflow room as well. I want to be clear. NRDC agrees with the Los Angeles City Bureau of Sanitation, the Los Angeles Board of Public Works, and their consultants at HF&amp;H that an exclusive franchise allows for the best environmental performance. Contrary to claims by some opponents of exclusive franchising, the commercial sector isn't recycling enough. It is not recycling at 75%. The number is likely below 19%. This sector is dramatically underperforming, and we need change. We question assertions by those voices like the CEO that the same environmental performance objectives can be obtained in a non-exclusive system. Simply stated, a non-exclusive system does not allow for the comprehensive planning that an exclusive system would create.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, just identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Carla Campos. Until a few months ago, I worked as a sorter at American Reclamation, one of the leading members of the L.A. County Disposal Association. I have been here many times to speak on behalf of my coworkers and myself to tell our story. It's the story of sorters and drivers throughout this city whose name you may never know because they work for companies just like American Reclamation, and they can't speak out for themselves. We've picked up your trash, we've sorted your trash, we've dealt with needles and blood and human waste, and we've done it with no protection. So last year, my coworkers and I put our names on a complaint to Cal OSHA. They issued a 36 health and safety violation and a $40,000 fine against the company. And five of those citations were for serious violations, which means they created risk of death or amputation. Three of us were fired for speaking out, but a federal judge eventually ruled that we were roughly terminated, and he ordered the company to give us our jobs back.
Thank you.
May, may, please continue.
Thank you. No, if I give you more than one minute, I've got 1,000 people in here, I'd have to give more. Ashley Coff, followed by Ashley Coff, followed by Hillary Gordon.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Ashley Coff. I'm a dietitian, and I am also here on behalf of the NRDC's Los Angeles Leadership Council. I'm a business owner, and I have businesses in both Beverly Hills as well as in Venice, California. I am extremely skeptical of the claims that the sky will fall if the city moves to an exclusive franchise system. I operate one of my offices, as I mentioned, in Beverly Hills. My waste is picked up, and I have not once had to complain about the services. Moreover, the rates in Beverly Hills have actually decreased in the last 10 years. In contrast, I am also, as I mentioned, have a business in Los Angeles. In terms of the number of trash systems that we see, the number of trucks going through on a, we have multiple haulers serving businesses on the exact same block. That means more trash trucks than is necessary, which leads to environmental impacts in the community as well as health impacts from the waste. As a health business owner, I am concerned about being a responsible steward for the earth. I am very active in the good food movement, and I encourage you to vote for an exclusive system.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is it Ms. Hillary Gordon, Alex Salgado, and Leslie Campbell?
Good morning. My name is Hillary Gordon. I'm the Chair of the Zero Waste Committee for the Angeles Chapter of the Sierra Club. We are the largest chapter in the Sierra Club with over 40,000 members. We unequivocally support an exclusive franchise because if the city of L.A. is ever going to realize its zero-waste goals, the opportunity to recycle must be guaranteed to all Angelenos. It will require comprehensive, long-term planning and programming, public education, pay-as-you-throw rate structures, food waste planning, infrastructure development. These things cannot realistically happen in a non-exclusive system, and the data has shown that they don't happen in non-exclusive systems. In a non-exclusive system, the most you can do is say, "All customers who want blue bins must get them." What you get is a permit system with a few more good intentions and a lot of self-interested self-reporting. A non-exclusive also completely fails to address the overlapping truck routes, unnecessary truck traffic, such as in my neighborhood where we have trucks on the street literally every day of the week, multiple times a day, and a non-exclusive does nothing to address this. Thank you very much.
Okay, next speaker, Alex Salgado, and Leslie Campbell.
Good morning. I'm Alex Salgado, and I'm a solid waste hauler. I'm here to support this exclusive franchise because I've been doing this work for 21 years, and I know what it means to work for a company as opposed to a bad company. Unfortunately, there are too many companies like American Reclamation where Carla Campos and her coworkers are. They don't care if they hurt the people who work for them, and they don't care about the public either. My fellow waste workers, whether drivers or sorters, are really the hardest-working people I know. We're doing the most people would never do. We're doing the jobs that most people would never do, but we do, what we do is important so our safety and well-being should be a concern for everyone. All workers in this industry should be protected, and they should have a voice on the job. They should be able to say when something is not being done right and could result in any injury or in harm to the public. No worker should have to endure what Carla Campos has endured.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you speak, Leslie, let's call up Ron Herrera, Maria Elena Durazo, and Greg Good.
Good morning. My name is Leslie Campbell. I manage Square One, a popular restaurant in East Hollywood. Most of the talk here today is about special interests of haulers and big businesses that would benefit handsomely from a non-exclusive system. The system we have now puts a burden on businesses that want to do the right thing. During the stakeholder and committee meetings, we heard from many small businesses that want to recycle but cannot. They go to great lengths, including breaking the law, to simply recycle their materials. The system doesn't serve them. There's also an illusion that businesses have flexibility and choice under the present system and in a non-exclusive. My experience at Square One shows something very different. It shows small companies don't understand confusing contracts. They are locked into contracts that automatically renew or contracts that are extended when adding services like recycling. They are stuck with the same hauler for years. Let me be clear. We cannot simply pick up the phone and change haulers. This is an illusion. We have no flexibility. There is no choice. The owners of Square One, along with nearly 100 other small businesses, have issued letters of support urging an exclusive franchise.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker.
Good morning, City Councilmembers. I'm Ron Herrera, Principal Officer of Teamsters Local 396. Local 396 is a 9,000-member local union affiliated with another 120,000 members of Teamsters Joint Council 42. My job is to represent workers, which I do with passion. Improving the quality of life for my members and their families is, is a task I welcome and am dedicated to accomplish. A waste system with enforceable standards and accountability, such as our proposed exclusive franchise system before you today, would immediately impact waste workers' lives in a real and positive way. Imagine being a waste worker, having to endure deplorable conditions. Then imagine a waste system which would provide protections through viable standards and accountability. Workers would have a system that would protect them from serious illness caused by contaminants. They would work in a system that would provide enforceable workplace safety standards, thus lessen the chance of injury. This council can move us forward in this system today. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, sisters and brothers. Maria Elena Durazo of the L.A. Federation of Labor, representing hundreds of thousands of workers in the county of Los Angeles, and it is clear we are here today to support an exclusive franchise system as the only way to protect the thousands of men and women who work in these dangerous jobs. I'm here today because men and women die on the job. Make no mistake, they are dangerous jobs. And who is on the other side of this issue? The haulers? The chamber who says that this is a cynical move? Well, it is not cynical when you care about men and women who work hard every single day, and it is unacceptable. You can say what you want to say, but don't say it's cynical and manipulative when you stand for the rights of men and women who put their lives on the job every single day. You know, sisters and brothers, what the right thing to do is today, vote for an exclusive franchise system.
Give us your name.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Greg Good. I'm the Director of the Don't Waste L.A. Project. I'd like the Don't Waste L.A. Coalition and those in favor of an exclusive franchise to please stand up. We have been at this for almost three years now. The opponents of an exclusive franchise say rates will go up. No data, no evidence. They say hundreds of companies will die. No data, no evidence. It is a recognized fact in this chamber now that there are a finite number of companies that actually do this business. They say you can accomplish all these goals in a non-exclusive, but according to who? According to the city's waste experts, the Bureau of Sanitation? According to this foremost waste consultant in the state, HF&amp;H? According to the environmental community? According to the worker health and safety community? No. They ask us to rely on the Chamber of Commerce, a swarm of lobbyists, and the CAO, who with all due respect, have no demonstrable expertise in any of these areas. 62 cities out of 88 now.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. If you're going to tell them. Brother Wright, Semboya Wright, Larry Gross, Mike O'Gara.
Good morning, Semboya Wright, proud employee of the Bureau of Sanitation, Executive Board Member of SEIU Local 721. That's right. I work for sanitation, so I know what these men and women have to go through, okay? One thing is, let's, let's be responsible. This is, we want to continue the quality services that the Bureau of Sanitation provides to the community and the customers. We're not dependent on the general fund when it comes to this, so all that stuff with the general fund is non-dependent. But let's continue the quality services that we provide to the families of Los Angeles. So I urge you to vote yes on the franchise, franchise services. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Gross, followed by Mike O'Gara.
Larry Gross, Coalition for Economic Survival. We're concerned about potential trash fee hikes and the impact on landlord costs and tenants' rents as a result of any new waste hauling plan. Given past conflicts, both landlord and tenant groups want to avoid any proposal fanning the flames of these tensions which could lead to new battles over rent hikes as a result of any trash fee increases. We differ with the landlords on this because in our opinion, an exclusive system is the best way to keep rates flat even when trash-related costs go up. We believe an exclusive system protects ratepayers, meaning for us, landlords and tenants, from paying higher waste rates that could possibly lead to higher rents. Therefore, we strongly urge an adoption of an exclusive system. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, Mike O'Gara, followed by Candace Kim, Jason Mashad. Yes, sir.
Good morning. I just did the two-minute mile from your overflow room. I'm requesting, I'm representing Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council. We support an exclusive agreement for 11 waste sheds. This is in the best interest of the environment. This ordinance doesn't go far enough. All vehicles hauling waste trash under this agreement must be fueled by CNG and LNG fuel. On a personal note, I believe all merfs handling this waste should be fully enclosed. That is the CND waste, the green waste, and the mixed waste. It all must be separated in a fully enclosed facility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Kim, followed by Jason Mashad Mashud. Go right ahead, Ms. Kim.
My name is Candace Kim with the Coalition for Clean Air. Improved waste management is important to air quality, and we urge you to support the exclusive franchise system proposal championed by leading environmental organizations such as CCA, Natural Resources Defense Council, Pacoima Beautiful, and Communities for a Better Environment. These environmental organizations are speaking to you to say you cannot get the same emission reductions with a non-exclusive franchise proposal. Reducing problems of inefficient overlapping truck service routes must be a priority. Increased efficiency is a central strategy to reduce fuel consumption and consequent greenhouse gas emissions, even when using clean trucks. And the use of a waste shed approach through an exclusive system is consistent with the concepts outlined in the Renew L.A. Plan. So these leading environmentalists ask you to listen to us and say you cannot get the same benefits from a non-exclusive plan, and exclusive franchise is the way to go.
Thank you. Are you Jason?
Hi, my name is Jason Mashoud. I own three restaurants here in Los Angeles. I was asked to come and speak just to bring together the point that all of the businesses that I'm a part of are, we're trying to find a way to increase the recycling and just to bring it all together into one kind of fundamentally easy-to-deal-with solution would be such a big help to local businesses. Right now, we use Athens. I'm actually from San Francisco. That's where I was trained, and so I, I've always liked the model that they had, and so anything that we can do to bring everything together towards a more straightforward and easy-to-understand plan is going to help business, it's going to help the neighborhoods, and that's, I think that's the wave of the future for us. If we can get to the point where neighborhoods are involved and people feel like they're a part of something, then we have a chance here. So it's a big deal, and I hope you guys make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, Mr. City Attorney, that concludes the public comment on this issue. Before I defer to Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labange for a quick introduction.
Mr. President and Members in the John F. R. Chambers, please welcome the great class from Los Angeles City Council, the Los Angeles City College visiting the Los Angeles City Hall and our council, Professor Eli African-American Studies and Political Science, big head for the Cubs from LACC, Great Community College. Good job.
Thank you for coming and welcome. Okay, Mr. Weezer, you want to call the various department people forward, or?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you very much. I'll do a quick introduction to kind of lay the stage as to where we are with this item, and secondly, I want to invite up some of the departments and our CAO to further discuss this item. It's a very important decision that the city is currently undertaking, and it's an issue that we've been discussing for about two years. And the Bureau of Sanitation and the Board of Public Works proposed a shift to an exclusive franchise system for both commercial and multifamily properties. This has included economic research and an investigation to how other cities are operating, and we found that it is a system of choice for a majority of the cities in Los Angeles and Orange Counties. The Energy and Environment Committee and the Ad Hoc Waste Committee both met jointly together on this proposal, and we acted unanimously to recommend a transition to an exclusive system. It was clear to the committees that the system needs to change and that our environmental and economic goals can be maximized through an exclusive system. It was also clear that there are many details still to be determined in what is admittedly a complex transition to a new system. That is why the committee's recommendation- That is why the committee's recommendation outlines the development of a franchise implementation plan. Now granted, what we will discuss today will not answer every question, but we do have one critical question to answer today, and that is, do we go to an exclusive or non-exclusive system, and then we work out on the details with an implementation plan, coming back to us within ninety days to further refine our final product? In committee as well, Mr. Kerkorian asked that we do an EIR, which we adopted. Usually what happens, we do an environmental assessment to determine whether we do a mitigated negative deck or we do a full EIR. In this case, we will do a full EIR to explore the alternatives and explore the pros and cons of moving forward with this on an environmental process. But then again, like I said, the important thing is today is whether we decide to go with a non-exclusive or exclusive. The Board of Public Works, Bureau of Sanitation, Energy and Environment Committee, and the Ad Hoc Committee all recommended an exclusive. And we'll hear from the departments today as to why we came up with that conclusion. So with that, let me invite up to speak to us further about this Andre Alarcon, the president of the Public Works Commission, and also Enrique Saldivar, the Sanitation General Manager, for a quick presentation. And then we will hear from our CAO and our city attorney.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Weezer, Council President, members. It is always indeed a pleasure to be before you, but particularly special this morning because, as the council member mentioned, we have been working on this issue for quite some time. My entire tenure on the Board of Public Works, three years, I have been investigating, analyzing the options before us, and we have opined as a unanimous board, in concurrence with the Bureau of Sanitation, to move forward with an exclusive waste hauling franchise. I've put together a brief PowerPoint presentation. I think it's important for us to set as a baseline of information some of the basic tenets of what is included in our proposal. Each of you should have a copy of that PowerPoint presentation, and for the audience, it is on the screens above. So why do we need a new system? I think we've talked about this for quite some time. The city's goal of reaching zero waste by 2025 is an aggressive goal, but it doesn't mean it's unattainable. Mayor has set also an aggressive goal of seventy-five percent diversion by 2013, and we've reached an unprecedented seventy-two percent diversion level, which is the greatest amount of diversion of any big city in the country, but it's still not enough. What do we need to do to get to our ninety percent, which is essentially what the industry standard for zero waste? I liken it to when you're on a diet. We've done everything that you can do by virtue of voluntary programs. The first ten pounds are easy, the last ten pounds are difficult. We've done everything we can by virtue of our voluntary programs, but we've got to do something big, we've got to do something structural in order for us to reach our ultimate goal of zero waste. Our current permit system can't require clean trucks, can't require haulers to abide by employee health and safety requirements, and can't require accountability for levels of diversion. So what exactly are we proposing? We're proposing an exclusive franchise system with one hauler per franchise zone, that we designate eleven franchise zones, which are subdivisions of the city's six current waste sheds. We've left essentially one of those waste sheds, the San Pedro Harbor area hole because of the geography of that area, and divided the other five waste sheds into two, which is how we come to eleven. We're suggesting a ten-year franchise term with two five-year renewal options. That allows for the amortization of capital costs and so forth for the haulers and puts the city and the haulers in the best position to negotiate a contract that's in the best interest of the city. Mandatory midterm assessments, annual or biannual service reviews would also be incorporated. So how will the proposed system help? An exclusive franchise system will trigger mandatory transition to clean fleet vehicles pursuant to SEAQMD Rule 1193, and I'll get into that in more detail in a moment. It will provide accountability on environmental, labor, and service standards by mandating diversion and recycling programs, setting maximum disposal rates, requiring detailed reporting, and protect waste workers by ensuring compliance with city's living wage ordinance, first source hiring, and authority to inspect workplaces, including recycling facilities. So there's been a lot of discussion on our proposal and the extent to which it provides opportunity for competition. I want to be clear that the exclusive proposal that we are putting forth protects the competitive market. It includes a highly competitive RFP process, and as you all know, the RFP process is inherently competitive. The best value evaluation of proposals will encourage proposers to offer the most competitive rates possible, free service enhancements, aggressive and aggressive diversion goals. In fact, our consultant, who is here behind me, and so if you've got questions on either of his reports, he's more than happy to answer them, but his cost and fee analysis noted that of twenty-four cities that utilized a competitive RFP process, that twenty-one of twenty-four of those cities experienced an overall rate decrease. The median rate reduction was approximately seventeen percent, and many of those cities added enhanced services as part of the competitive process. So next, we can talk about rates. There's also been a lot of concern about the potential increase in rates. There has been some suggestion that under exclusive franchise systems, rates will rise in excess of thirty-three percent. So we wanted to question, we wanted to test that theory, so we commissioned our own independent assessment of L.A. County cities to compare the cost of services in an exclusive system versus a non-exclusive system. And what our consultant found, who, by the way, is a waste expert, it's all that they do, it's all that they've done their entire career, that their key finding was that costs for services are relatively similar in exclusive and non-exclusive systems. The service itself, to provide the service, when you segregate out the franchise fees and all of these other added factors, the cost for the service is relatively similar, approximately a hundred and two dollars per ton in both the exclusive and non-exclusive system. And what does that mean? That means that the system structure itself doesn't necessarily drive up rates, that policy decisions like diversion requirements, service provision, and the extent to which we impose franchise fees are more likely the driving factors for rates. So next, I just want to touch on, because we're talking about rates and franchise fees, the city attorney opinion, which I think is relevant to that conversation, very recently opined on the five-year notice requirement set forth by the state. They clearly outlined that that requirement applies to both in exclusive and non-exclusive systems as is being proposed by the CAO and the Bureau of Sanitation. They quote noted, "The franchise systems proposed by the Bureau and the CAO may not be implemented until the expiration of those state-mandated notice periods." Now, what does that mean? That means that in the commercial sector, franchising as proposed cannot happen until December 2016, which means that franchise fees, the potential general revenue fund, general fund revenue from the commercial sector cannot be realized until 2017. I like to view that as an opportunity for us to build our system, do significant outreach and exhaustive vetting of the ordinance and CEQA and so forth. So what does our existing system look like? Collection of solid waste is divided into public and private. Public Bureau of Sanitation handles residential, multifamily, small, four units or less. Private collection is really what we're talking about today. It's the independent hauler market. It's multifamily, five units or more, commercial, and construction and demolition. Now, how many haulers do we currently have in that private market? Total, these are updated numbers, by the way, in our former reports, those are outdated numbers. These are the most recent numbers that we have. In total, our universe of permitted independent haulers is eight hundred. Seven hundred and fifty-five of those haulers are construction and demolition. That's ninety-four percent of the haulers. That actually don't really account for much of the waste. It's a lot of haulers that are very, very small, but we're proposing that they be exempted because of an action that this council took to adopt an ordinance that already diverts that material, requires that all mixed CND waste be sent to certified processors. So that material is already being taken care of. So what our focus really is, is the commercial and multifamily sector. And you'll see here that there are only forty-five permitted haulers in that universe. And when you look closely at those forty-five, only twenty-six of those haulers actually collect more than a thousand tons per year. The nineteen that don't collect more than a thousand tons per year, you know, they can't, we believe that they're primary sources of business is outside of the city of Los Angeles. They have a permit here for convenience, but there's no way that they could possibly survive advantage of business that solely hauls less than a thousand tons per year. So our universe, really, those that function and operate in the city of Los Angeles is twenty-six. There was a lot of contention, I think, that we were, you know, that the universe was in the hundreds, and we were going to, we were proposing to put hundreds of haulers out of business, but I think by virtue of these factual numbers, we've cleared up those concerns. The current market share, current annual total gross waste hauling revenues in the city is approximately two hundred and eighteen million. It's a seven-year average. The top ten haulers control ninety-five percent of the market, which means the remaining thirty-five haulers make up less than five percent. Our top four haulers, eighty-seven percent of L.A.'s market, Republic, Athens, Waste Management, and Crown Disposal. Our system is largely managed by big haulers, but there are some small haulers. And so we've, pursuant to the direction of Councilmember Alarcon Kerkorian in Coarette's motion that instructed the Bureau to identify ways to provide competitive opportunities for small hauling companies, we've identified two opportunities to consider for the council's consideration. One, option one is to utilize mandatory subcontracting minimums for each of the eleven franchise zones. That system would allow for small haulers to serve as subs to the prime contractor. That, we believe, provides the greatest amount of opportunity for small hauler participation in our program. Option two is to designate a number of small zones for small haulers as the prime contractor. And so we'll report back pursuant to the committee majority report. Clean fleet, SEAQMD Rule 1193 requires fleet operators to buy alternative fuel vehicles to be used in AQMD's area of jurisdiction. So the rule applies to private waste haulers that contract or franchise with a governmental agency that limits the number of haulers allowed to operate. So what does that mean? That means that the rule does not apply to our current system, an open-market system, or an unlimited non-exclusive system, which is what the CAO was formerly proposing. It does apply, however, to an exclusive franchise system, which is our proposal. Film studios. So there's been a lot of discussion about the unique nature of Los Angeles in that we are the film capital of the, I think it's the world, if not the country. Public Works team, we held onsite visits with two major L.A. studios, Paramount and Fox. We learned that the majority of their waste material is waste, makes up waste stream that we are proposing to be exempted under our exclusive system. Construction and debris, by virtue of what they do, they build up sets, they break them down, it's construction and demolition, under our proposal, it would be exempted. Hazardous waste, electronic waste. In addition, on-location production, it's temporary filming, so we don't believe that it fits within the parameters of a commercial premise as we've defined it, and so it will not be governed by our proposed exclusive system. Additionally, unique service requirements will definitely be built into the RFP language, including things such as specialized vehicles to maneuver on lots, twenty-four-hour service, prompt service respond times, and so forth. Hospitals, same applies for hospitals. There's been some concern as to the impact of our proposal on hospitals, so we also visited three L.A. city hospitals, White Memorial, Keck USC, and Northridge Hospital. Again, most of their waste is regulated by other federal, state, and local agencies and is proposed to be exempted under our system. Medical red bag waste is exempt, pharmaceutical waste, hazardous waste, radioactive waste. Franchise agreements in other cities in L.A. County include forty-three hospitals in exclusive franchise cities, twenty-two hospitals in non-exclusive franchise cities, and four hospitals in unincorporated county. And when our staff contacted the cities with exclusive solid waste franchises with large hospitals in their jurisdiction, including Kaiser Permanente, St. Francis Medical Center, City of Hope, and Loma Linda, each of those cities confirmed that there is no franchise exemption for hospitals and their commercial solid waste, which substantiates our continued recommendation that they not be exempted. So what are we asking of the council today? We are asking that the council adopt the majority report put forth by the Joint Energy and Environment and Ad Hoc on Waste Reduction and Recycling Committees to do two things, to, one, give final policy direction that the exclusive model is the preferred system structure for the city of Los Angeles, and allow the Bureau of Sanitation and the Board to develop a detailed implementation plan, which will include far greater detail on many of the issues that I've discussed. I am joined by our director of the...
I have a quick question. Who told you that the first ten pounds was easy? Anyway, Mr. Enrique. Enrique, I think you were about to be introduced.
Good morning, honorable council members. It's an honor to be here before you with what is going to be a waste shed type of decision that you will make. I want to simply say that the two primary drivers for this initiative have been, two that have been spoken to by many of the speakers and many of, some of you, Councilmember Weezer and the Commissioner. One is on environmental value, and the other is the economic value, the ability to generate some revenue for the city. And it is on those two that we heavily considered our recommendation to go with the exclusive. And there's no question in our mind that the exclusive will give us a higher achievement on both the economic value, creating efficiency in the system that will allow haulers to then translate those to a franchise fee. And then second would be a higher degree of environmental order that will give us and yield us the best environmental benefit. So the Commissioner covered all of the intricacies of the policy that you will be considering today, and so I'm available here for questions.
Thank you, Enrique. Mr. Weezer, do you want to, before I go to the other members...
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I'd like to invite the CAO and the city attorney's office up to the desk, and I think they are available for questions and comments unless the CAO would like to make an opening remarks. Mr. Santana? Do you feel you would like to make opening remarks, or are you just available for questions?
I'll say a few things and then...
Okay, thanks. And then we're open for discussion, Mr. President.
Good morning, we get Santana, CAO. If you look at this issue on its basic elements, the Bureau and the CAO's office actually agree on the need to change the status quo. When we originally proposed looking at this issue three years ago, it was within the context of trying to find revenue opportunities for the city in light of our fiscal crisis. Since then, it's become very clear that there are other reasons that in some ways surpass the original to change the current structure which we have. And so when we looked at the specific proposal at the request of the various committees and council members, we looked at it from the perspective of how do we achieve the same objectives of increasing the diversion rates that I think you have established as a policy, ensuring that the workers that are employed by the industry are treated more fairly and provided the kind of wages that your council expects, and also ensuring that the environmental impacts of this industry are minimized. And so it's from that perspective and that same common goals that we identify a number of different options and ultimately concluded that a non-exclusive would be able to achieve many of those objectives without creating the secondary impact that we've heard and you've heard from the business community. Under a non-exclusive, each, the city would establish standards that would determine how we minimize the environmental impact, increase diversion rates, and ensure that the industry is fair to its employees, while allowing each multifamily owner, building owner, every commercial owner, still to ultimately select the vendor that they feel best meets their needs, and allows the free market to determine rates. And so our recommendation is, continues to be a non-exclusive. As was stated by Commissioner Alarcon, there has been a city attorney opinion that has established that either with an exclusive or non-exclusive, the time period still stands in either a recommendation. And regardless of whether we personally agree with that opinion or not, the city attorney's opinion is ultimately the opinion that the city is bound to maintain. In our latest report, we do identify options for you to consider if, in fact, you wanted to move forward with an exclusive or non-exclusive on the multifamily sector prior to the completion of the waiting period for the commercial sector. And that's an option ultimately that you would have to make a decision on. And that's an option ultimately that you would have to make a decision on. I would, I would close with this, and that is to say that what I think, what our hope would be, and I think I could speak for the Bureau as well, is that an ultimate decision is made as to which direction to go, and that once that decision is made, we will work in concert with the Bureau and with the board to figure out how to best implement whatever structure that ultimately you decide to move forward on, and address many of the outstanding questions and issues that still need to be answered. Thank you.
Mr. Labange. Mr. Corretts. No, you, you, Mr. Corretts. No, Mr. Corretts, next time Tommy will be in his seat. Mr. Corretts, then Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've looked at this issue extensively over many, many months, and we've examined the pros and cons in detail, and I think most, most of the testimony today bears out my thoughts. The bottom line is, we all know beyond a shadow of a doubt, our waste collection system is in need of a vast overhaul. We need to deal with greater environmental quality, greater worker safety, traffic, air quality, and I believe the exclusive franchise is the way to do that. I think also it's much more difficult to regulate and enforce in a non-exclusive system. First and most importantly, I think an exclusive franchise system in, in Los Angeles can and must provide competitive rates and high quality. That's the bottom line for me. If I have any doubts that we can do that, I will not continue to support the system, but I am convinced that we can. Second, I believe an exclusive franchise system will allow us to achieve our environmental goals, and when we put something into the recycling bin, we need to know that it is in fact being recycled into something else and not being landfilled after the diversion quota of the day is met. We need to put a stop to dirty murfing. How much good recyclable material gets contaminated and landfilled that way? We have more controls over this. I want to be certain that a little restaurant who wants to be more environmentally conscious but can't afford to do composting and recycling in the current system will be able to do so because of economies of scale. I want all our businesses, large and small, to have the same opportunity to be as green as they want to be. The city can provide that. I also believe an exclusive system gives us much greater control over the number of trucks on the streets. It's not just about traffic and air pollution, both of which are extremely important, it's also about the damage that this many trips by heavy trucks inflict on our streets, which is paid for by the city and ultimately the taxpayers to repair. And I need to repeat that we are committed to making an exclusive system work for both the customer and the waste industry. We are going to make the customer service a priority. We must include a way to include small, higher-quality haulers that allows them to continue to exist and allows them some growth potential. We must have trucks picking up waste wherever and whenever they're needed, even if in the case of the film industry, it's in the middle of the night at a moment's notice. If we can't do all that, I will not continue to support this, but I am convinced we can. And if there are quality problems, which I think is the most important issue, haulers will be subject to severe penalties, and if they continue to fail, they can lose their franchise. If we do not offer a high-quality product, then I will not support this, and I will not continue to support it once it's implemented. We must be able to guarantee that. We have a chance to set a standard that our country and the world can emulate, to clean up our air, to clean up our streets, and to make it safe for workers to go to work and not worry about their life and limbs. I believe an exclusive franchise is the best way to do all of this, help us meet all of our goals, and that's why I'm supporting it today.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. For those at the center table, just a couple of questions. What does it do to bids? We have bids throughout the city and they collect trash, and what does it do to bids?
The bid agreements will remain and will be-
But they're trash, they're trash.
Yeah, they'll be respected by this model. I mean, they'll continue to exist as they are.
But who will pick up the trash in the bids area?
Well, if the bids pick it up now, they will continue to do that, you know? We're working with some bids now where we sanitation has taken over some of the areas on behalf of the bids.
Right, but they'll still, they won't, then that won't be exclusive, the exclusive won't pick up. What happens to the Hollywood bid, the NoHo bid, the Civic Center bid?
So by definition, the bids typically provide for services in the public right away. Again, that's not a commercial premise, so it doesn't fit within the parameters of the exclusive franchise proposal.
So it won't affect the bids?
Right.
And just a couple of the questions too on that. How much staff are you going to need to implement this?
Still yet to be determined.
I, I have asked for six existing positions to be unfrozen. These are existing, funded, authorized positions that I have in my, in my authority. I'm asking the council to approve the unfreeze, so I'm not asking for a new additional positions.
Yeah, did you ever see the movie Damn Yankees? In the movie, the guy wants to go back in life and be Yankee, but then in the end, he's going to have to leave his wife, and he asks the devil, because the devil does the trick, not that anybody's a devil, but he's asked for an escape clause. Is there an escape clause in this? If we feel what the CAO or other people say, is there, what do we do, we determine if this is working or not working in 2021? Let's say it's not working.
Well, we could do a lot of things over the course of the process before we get to 2021. By virtue of the RFP process, we can-
Is there an escape clause? That's all.
There is. We can issue the RFP, we can receive the proposals. If the rates come back and they don't meet our standards, we can reject all bids and we can move forward with a different proposal. That's what we could do at the outset. We don't believe that will be the case, but if necessary, we could do that. By virtue of the contracts and the terms that we're going to set forth in the franchise agreements, we can always terminate contracts.
Very good, thank you very much. I've lost 39,000 people in the area of Wilshire, which I used to represent. How does this impact the streets in the older, no off-street parking, no places for bins? How does this affect some of the, have you studied the older neighborhoods?
Well, you know, the mode of-
With high-density housing?
I mean, those are absolutely issues that we are aware and know about and deal with them now, councilmen. I mean, many of them with you directly. And so the mode of operation and the service model at the actual location, that is something that the private hauler and the property owner will make arrangements for, whatever works best for the customer.
Just to say, Enrique, as you know, trash is very personal, and for the people who I used to represent in the oldest neighborhoods and the highest density, there were often challenges with bins and noise and all these other things, so we're up to the task as we go forward. I have a few more questions, I'll punch my button, thank you.
Mr. Rosendorf.
Mr. President, thank you. A couple of quick ones, okay? First is about what are some of the worker's safety and environmental concerns that led to this proposal, and how will this exclusive franchise system increase health and safety standards for workers?
Do you want to?
Quickly, I got another question.
Yeah, so we, by virtue of the contract arrangement, councilmen, many of the safety measures will extend to the entire chain of contractors, which will include processors, people who sort, and so OSHA standards, other existing standards will have to be applied and enforced.
Because at this point, they don't exist, right? And some workers are vulnerable. Is that right?
Yeah, right now, we're under a permit system, it's a ministerial process, we have no means by which to regulate the workers and the industry, the, the environment that these workers are in. We have heard awful cases, people getting pricked by needles as they are sorting through items and they're not protected by virtue of a contract where we can enforce living wage and other workplace safety requirements, we will hold those, those folks accountable.
Okay, that is very important to me. And the second question, Mike Millman gets up there, one of my guys from Mar Vista, and he talks about what protections are there that the rates will not increase for Monpal landlords or their tenants. That's a big issue for me. I have folks who have three or four units, they take care of their tenants, they work with them, how will this impact them?
So we've, we've actually proffered a, a different type of implementation of the franchise fee. Rather than imposing a 10% to 14% franchise fee in year one, what we're suggesting is maybe we, we grow that over time. So for instance, over the course of a 10-year contract, year one, the franchise fee be 5%. Have that escalate by 1% over the course of the contract term, so that by the 10th year, that you are at a 14%, which is the median franchise fee in LA County, so as to mitigate the, the impact or potential impact for increased rates, which, you know, is still, it's not a foregone conclusion that rates will go up, but in the case of that there, there may be slight increases, the franchise fee really is our opportunity to mitigate that, that, that impact.
Okay, and last point, as you mentioned, hospitals and entertainment industry, are you comfortable with your discussions with them? Part of the group was not pleased with that? Do you feel that we're moving in the right direction with both those groups?
I think by virtue of the fact that we are at the same table and that we are continuing the conversation, I think that that is a good sign. I think we have a good working relationship, but again, the policymakers need to, we would like for the policymakers to make a decision on the structure, and that will sort of free us up to have a more fruitful conversation on standards and service provision with both the studios and the hospital.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Englander.
Thank you. I believe I can say with some credibility that there's no member of this council who cares more about zero waste than me, particularly since I have one of the largest operating landfills in the country in my district. The zero-waste goal was the cornerstone of the Renew LA Plan, which I co-authored and co-collaborated with, with my mentor, former Councilman Greg Smith. The Renew LA Plan was embraced by members of this council and through its ad hoc Renew LA Committee, and the considerable and laudable efforts of the Bureau of Sanitation, its principals helped bring the city to actually a 73% landfill diversion rate. Multifamily and commercial recycling were the two requirements of the Renew LA Plan's legislative package, and the initial seven-year notice of intent to franchise was approved by the Renew LA Ad Hoc Committee in 2005. Many of the goals expressed throughout this process are desirable and achievable without disenfranchising our business community, our multifamily residents, and our friends in the hauling community that have helped the city of LA achieve the exemplary level of diversion we currently enjoy, the highest of any large city in the country. Yesterday, this body approved going out to the voters for a half-cent sales tax to fund public safety and other core responsibilities. In addition, the voters just approved the governor's sales tax and income tax increases. Yesterday, this very body approved the layoff of 159 civilian LAPD workers, 12 fire department civilians, and is still considering the layoff of 50 criminal prosecutors in the city attorney's office. I cannot in good conscience support the creation of a new city bureaucracy that requires additional city staff and resources when we are unable to provide the core services required by our charter and expected by the taxpayers. I can, however, support a solid waste franchise that meets the city's environmental goals while sustaining a competitive marketplace and allowing businesses and multifamily residents to have their individual needs met within their own budgets. I can also support a solid waste franchise that increases general fund resources without putting longtime family businesses in Los Angeles throughout the hauling community out of business. If there's one thing I've learned from my colleagues here in the city of Los Angeles, it's that we've got to be more inclusive and not exclusive. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, everybody. This is one of these moments, I know we had folks on both sides of this issue who said, oh, this is about politics. I want to say for the folks at the table, I've been incredibly impressed, and not everybody at the table even agrees, that this has been a discussion about policy and one of the most in-depth discussions. And, you know, I remember when Ruth Galanter once turned to me, we were sitting together here, it was my first week on the job, and somebody came up to the podium and said, you guys are all bought and paid for by the developers, you're just going to vote for this. She turned to me, she said, the only problem with the conspiracy theories around here is none of us are smart enough to pull them off. And I tend to think that the more meetings we do and the more discussions that we have, this really is about the light of day and about an open and transparent process, and I want to thank people for that. When we look at this, there's a couple of concepts that we're looking at. One is competition and one is efficiency. Competition in a completely unregulated place can, in some ways, one aspect of competition, which is a free-for-all, everybody's out there, the marketplace in its idealized form is supposed to bring prices down and often can. But also, another part about competition is that it assumes that everybody has equal leverage. And I was looking at San Jose, the Business Journal in San Jose, so not a, you know, pro-labor publication, talking about what happened when they were starting their new recycling program for businesses, and they said, quote, "Small businesses in particular areas might see better rates than they had before because their size didn't give them much leverage when they had to negotiate for themselves." And as they went and they talked to businesses, they were actually quite excited about having this in San Jose, and that a majority would see a decrease, according to the study that they had in San Jose, of their overall rates when you looked at all businesses together. But we also have efficiency here, and on one hand, the efficiency of the marketplace is one thing, but there's another efficiency, which is what it means when we have 20 different companies on a single street, what it means to the cost of our streets and our street repairs, which is a public works consideration, what it means as well for our environment. And one of the nice things about both sides is everybody agrees, and we weren't there a couple of years ago, we're not for this discussion, everybody's saying, please, let us have cleaner trucks, please, let us make sure that we have better worker conditions, and that in itself is a victory no matter what happens today. But if you look at why we have been strong, and if you look at the number of the cities that have been able to bring down prices, it's because we can also regulate what those prices are. So for business who is unsure what this will mean to them, the sheer size of our market share and our leverage ensures not only that we'll have worker conditions that are fair, not only will we have a better environment, but we can protect businesses from the costs as well. There's a lot of different motions that are going to be before us that we're looking at as well. But too much in the city is not being recycled, too much is going unregulated, too many permits are out there, and we have no idea what's actually being done. And so after weighing this over the last few months, I come out in favor of an exclusive franchise, because I think it gives us the power for businesses as well as for workers, for the environment as well as for the community. And we look at our ability to be able to use market forces in the best sense of saying, you have to compete to earn this contract, and if you're no good, you're not coming back. That captures the best of that while at the same time making sure that we don't have the inefficient system that we have here today. So I want to thank the folks that are at the table in making that happen. I'm sure there'll be some tweaks, in particular, the film industries, we worked very closely with, and Mr. Labange and I have a motion to make sure that those concerns, because the film industry has been in so many ways best-in-class on recycling diversion, just as we as a city have been best-in-class. Let's make sure we keep that leadership. It is time for us to act like leaders, and it's time for us to do what so many cities have done, and the sky has not fallen. In fact, we're able to control those prices even better, I think, for our companies while doing the right thing for our environment and our streets. Thank you.
Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So, let me start, start where I will, why I will end up. I'm going to ask that we move to adopt the CAO's report for a non-exclusive franchise system for waste hauling, because that was not adopted by the minority or the majority reports on file. I reviewed the reports transmitted by the Board of Public Works and the CAO, and I also listened to the testimony given by the Joint Energy and Environment Ad Hoc Waste Reduction Recycling Committee, and I wanted to put my concerns on the record. The proposed exclusive model, I believe, would put small waste hauling businesses at a competitive disadvantage, many of whom are third- and fourth-generation family-owned businesses that have been operating in our city. This proposed exclusive model will prevent LA residents and businesses from doing business with the waste hauler of their choice, and may prevent Los Angeles businesses the ability to get the service at the level that they need it. The exclusive system, I believe, will reduce the city's leverage over waste haulers and their performance, and create a number of large waste hauling monopolies that could come together hypothetically to negotiate against the city. I would like to have a new program, a fresh look. Now, this one will require that we hire new staff to implement, to honor, and enforce elements of an exclusive system, and to respond to customers when they're dissatisfied with their mandated waste hauler. We need to know how much that's going to cost. An exclusive system also compromises the city's ability to implement alternative waste processing technologies and facilities, as it's been moving towards over the past few years, and reduces our control over existing transfer stations. Now, in contrast, a non-exclusive system proposed by the CAO would afford the city the opportunity to continue to mandate environmental programs, diversion requirements, workplace safety regulations, and generate revenue for the city's general fund. It will continue to allow rates to be set in a competitive marketplace, not require significant new levels of staffing, allow customers to choose the waste hauler they want to do business with, and negotiate appropriate, appropriate service levels and prices directly with their haulers. The CAO's report has pointed out the non-exclusive trash franchise system would give the city more flexibility to control performance standards and introduce new technologies, especially if they have to face the opposition of more well-financed net- if they have to face the opposition of more well-financed national firms operating under an exclusive agreement. Now, small waste haulers employ people, both union and non-union, who are also opposed to the exclusive trash franchise system, and they are at risk of being forced out of business. We have to do an environmental impact report for both an exclusive and non-exclusive franchise agreement. Any decent EIR needs to project alternatives. So I think we need the details of each system before we can take an action. I think we're up to about 14 or 15 motions now, amending motions. I've introduced two. One, 14C, is a catch-all to address all niche industries and concerns. That includes film studios, hospitals, nonprofits, high-tech firms, construction firms, and others so that they can be exempted from this. It's important that any system the city moves forward with takes into account those concerns and requirements. Now, I also want you to note the amendment in 14C, and this is the language. The motion is amended to instruct the Bureau of Sanitation and the chief administrative officer in consultation with various industries in the city to ensure that the requirements of all different business types in the city are adequately addressed in any, any waste hauling franchise system and/or that certain businesses and industries that already meet specified environmental goals be exempted from requirements to use a franchised waste hauler. My second amending motion, which is 14M, asks to exempt nonprofit institutions from requirements to use a franchise waste hauler. Now, I've been advised by the city attorney that we can't specifically reference religious institutions and that nonprofit institution is a catch-all phrase to include nonprofit organizations such as the missions and the social service providers in the Skid Row community that have to deal with an inordinate amount of waste, trash, and have high volumes of trash hauling and religious institutions as well. So I hope you will take note of what I am trying to do here today, but I think by virtue of the fact that we have so many amending motions, we're up to motions A through O now, it leads me to believe that what we have here on the table today is not quite cooked and isn't ready to go.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I'd just like, as the CAO, I was somewhat surprised also at the city attorney's opinion regarding the delay in implementing a non-exclusive, but you also identified there were three options that could be available. Could you articulate the three options and which, if you could estimate, the kind of revenue that may be forthcoming?
Well, as Commissioner pointed out, the, the department issued a notice in two phases. The first phase was for multifamily and the second was in commercial. The city has the option to adopt an exclusive or non-exclusive for the multifamily about in the middle of next calendar year, so probably sometime at the end of June, early July, assuming that all the other pieces involved with that could be implemented, that the notice period would have been completed for that. So that continues to be an option for your council, and of course, that applies to both an exclusive and a non-exclusive.
On the non-exclusive, have you made estimate what the revenue might be forthcoming on any of those three options?
Our general estimate would be, it would be depending on ultimately what the percentage of the franchise fee would be, but assuming that it's at a 15 percent, it could be as high as $15 million.
Okay. The other thing, could you, and I've read your report and the answers that you just gave us back on November the 9th report, can you go back through, just clearly articulate the comparison of exclusive and non-exclusive and all of the recommendations that were viewed as positive in the exclusive? And I think your report identified that you could reach them equally as well in the non-exclusive. Can you explain that?
As I stated in our, my initial comments, you know, we share the same objectives of being able to increase the diversion rates for commercial multifamily, minimize the environmental impacts of the industry, and third, ensure greater worker protection and higher wages. In the context of those three objectives, we believe that should the city want to still achieve those objectives, it could, it could do so through a non-exclusive without having the subsequent negative impact on businesses by requiring that they no longer use the current haulers that pick up their trash and, and that relationship between the haulers, each restaurant, each church, each commercial mall, each multifamily unit, and simply require that any hauler that operates within the City of Los Angeles meet the, the specific requirements that your council would adopt.
Okay. And Commissioner, you mentioned earlier that you're still at the table with the hospital industry, and has anything come to conclusion? Because one of the things that concerned me just this morning, we got this stack of letters from the Hospital Association that represents 90 hospitals, Cedars, Providence, White Memorial, a variety of them, that are saying oppose this. I'm just wondering, has there been any headway on dealing with hospitals specifically?
Yeah. So for the past, in the past 30 days, I would guess, it's been about 30 days, that we've sat down, the bureau and I, with the representatives of the Hospital Association twice for about an hour and a half, if not longer, each occasion. The first conversation was really a relationship-building conversation, an understanding of what we were proposing and an understanding of their position at the outset. The second conversation, and there was also an exchange, they submitted a letter in response in the aftermath of that meeting to identify all of the types of waste that they have on their, their, on a typical hospital premise, who regulates that, so that we could better understand the hospital operation. Second meeting was, how do we work within the parameters of your operations? How can we work together? I think it's a continuing conversation. We've only had two meetings since the joint committee, but I think that once the council makes a policy decision on the structure of the system, they will be more forthcoming in terms of the detailed information on the, the level of service, the frequency of service, for instance, that they require.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I would just ask that you look at my motion on item 14N. There's an attached report for the CAO that was dated November the 9th that gives a consistent and considerable amount of new information since the committees have met and answering about 20 to 30 questions that were presented during our E and N committee.
Mr. Alacón.
Councilmembers, many years ago, my daughter was the vanguard in our household to direct us on issues related to improving the environment, recycling, challenging us to ensure that we recycled our trash, ensure that anybody who smoked got out of the house, and, and holding us accountable when, when we made mistakes. I can't help but tell you that I'm having a fatherly moment at this time because she's still doing it. But I also have to look at my four-year-old daughter and, and give her a future that is best for her. And so, you know, because of understanding what the next generation wanted by listening to my daughter and the kids that she was growing up with and watching what they were doing, you know, I decided, I thought I was the most prominent advocate for zero waste when I shut down Lopez Canyon landfill. I, I, and then when, when we moved to create a sustainability building project for the City of Los Angeles, we did the first at Lopez, at Lake Duteris Library. It was because I listened to that message of the next generation, not the current generation, not the generations before that got us into this mess, but by listening to the next generation that has a better idea of how to clean our environment. I want to look at my daughter Camila and be able to tell her, I voted to clean our environment that day, and that's why our neighborhoods look better. That's why we have fewer trash trucks on the street with no standards, with no, not using the latest technology to ensure that they are clean. So I'm, you know, when I look at this program, I'm just amazed at the complexity of information that has been presented that supports that same idea that we need to continue to clean our environment. We're still a long way away from perfect. We're a long way away from zero waste. I believe this is the way to expedite that process. I also believe that the fallder all about this not being competitive is ridiculous. This money, whatever money is generated in this economy is going to private industry. That is the reality, and, and so it will, there will be a competitive environment. But I also would say that we, if we created a competitive environment in every aspect of what we do, where would our water and power system be? Where would our bus system be? I mean, we, those, we have to ensure that services are given fairly to every community and that some communities don't have, get dumped on more than other communities. That's why I got started in this business, because I, I was sick of the Northeast San Fernando Valley getting dumped on with 35 landfills in its history. We changed that course by closing Lopez Canyon. We can change the course today. So this is not about, this is not about a regular economic market. This is about cleaning our environment, and, and I have to tell you, when you, when you get the forces of labor and the forces behind cleaning our environment together, that's, that's a powerful voice for the future. And that's, that is the leadership that we should follow as, as leaders in our community. And sometimes you just have to say no to the advocates for big business. Every once in a while, I do that. So with that, I would like to say we should move forward with the recommendations of the committee. I think we should, we should send all the recommendations, all the amendments to Public Works Committee for consideration. Some of them might be good, some of them are loony, but I think we should send them all to committee for consideration. But frankly, there, there's been enough work on this. Let's, let's vote for the next generation. Let's make it cleaner, let's make it more efficient, let's, let's make them proud of the parents that sit around this, this horseshoe.
Thank you, Mr. President. Orange County, 34 cities in Orange County, 31 of them have exclusive contracts, is that correct?
Yes.
31 out of 34?
In Orange County?
Yes.
You know, we, I don't have a frame of reference for Orange County. Our assessment was Los Angeles County, however, we do have our consultant on hand who may have some...
Well, I have some documentation. Pardon me? Well, according to the records we have, I'm asking, is Orange County an anti-business county? And they have 31 out of 34, according to the information I've got. If they're a pro-business, a pro-environment, it seems interesting that out of 34 cities in the county of Orange, 31, according to the records we have, show that they have an exclusive system. Have we received feedback from some of the other cities such as San Jose, San Francisco, Oakland? Have we done research to see how this system works with them and those other municipalities?
In fact, we have. Our consultant initially was retained to specifically assess the San Jose model and extrapolate from their experiences ways in which the, the system here in Los Angeles could be developed. And so I'm going to ask our consultant, Leitha Zett, to just give you a synopsis of, of what his findings are.
What, is it, was it good return or was it poor return? Because I only have...
If I give you this piece of information, maybe you...
The clock is ticking, so I don't have a whole lot of time to ask it.
Seventeen of the 26 largest cities in California have exclusive.
And how is the response to...
They've had it for a number of years.
How's it working?
It's working fine.
How are the rates?
Competitive.
The business communities accepted it?
Yes.
And then how do we, with the rates, we're talking about rates competitive, and when they have the exclusive contract, they'll have an exclusive area to set the rates. How do we make sure that those rates are competitive and they don't increase to a point where the businesses start screaming and they can't afford to pay the rates that the exclusive wants to offer?
So the RFP process is a competitive process by nature and by definition, which is also why it's important that we change the system so that it becomes more efficient, the system as a whole, so that haulers can be more efficient themselves by virtue of having higher density of collection allows them to be more efficient. So we believe we're going to see rates that are very competitive because of that.
So instead of traveling multi-areas, they'll be concentrated in that particular area and pick it up?
Absolutely. Allows them to have a lower cost of operation.
There are two very practical ways that we can limit skyrocketing rates. We can impose a cap. If we see that the market is moving in a certain direction, we can impose a cap on how those rates move, but we can also make adjustments in terms of diversion, offer incentives if, if certain, if certain entities reach certain levels of diversion. There are a lot of means by which, in the contract, we can manage the increase in rates.
So we will have some control over the rates? They won't just be open market rates as they are now?
The competitive, the value of the asset in exclusive system is high. That is just going to drive the proposers, the haulers, particularly those who are currently active in our market, to fight for that asset. A 10-year sole exclusive right to a significant segment of the Los Angeles market, a $215 million a year market, is a valuable asset. They will fight, that's going to drive down their rates that they, that they submit in their proposals.
And the smaller companies that we discussed, what's going to happen with those?
We are doing everything that we can to provide opportunities for those small haulers. As I mentioned, we've got two options that we're considering. We will provide report backs on both, the first of which is a mandatory subcontracting minimum. So as the, as the prime contractor, the bigger haulers essentially mentor, build into their proposals the smaller haulers to ensure small, small business opportunities. But it's not just small haulers. There are other types of small businesses that can benefit by virtue of a mandatory subcontracting minimum. For instance, it's not just picking up of the trash, there are opportunities for cleaning out of the bins. That can be offered to small businesses, local businesses, so that's one option.
Check your time, Mr. Zai.
We're also considering small zones for small haulers.
Okay, I'll come back. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Corret.
Very briefly, obviously, I'm very supportive of this proposal, but there are a lot of details, most of which we've already talked about, that we have to be sure we deal with for this to work right. Just two that I want to flag very briefly. One is the film studio proposal that calls out that the majority of waste already wouldn't be regulated, and the idea that you could have one hauler for the remainder and one hauler for construction demolition, et cetera. That strikes me as actually more of a logistical nightmare than just having one hauler do all of it. So I would ask that you continue working with the, the film studios to come up with a solution that we're confident works. That strikes me as not a good one. Also, I want to call out, and it's particularly focused on my district in Century City, the fact there are a number of high-recycling lead buildings, and I want to see at the end of this process that there's a guarantee that their recycling rates don't go down because we don't have a process that includes them. So I just flagged those two details. I know in the, the months ahead, we're going to be tweaking a lot of this to make sure a complex system works perfectly.
Labange.
Public buildings, government-owned properties.
County?
County.
Federal, et cetera?
Public schools.
State, county, and...
Mr. Weezer on all the L.A. Unified, et cetera?
Yes.
Mr. Weezer, so these will go to your committee, all these A through O, and look at that, and as Mr. Corret said, looking at the studios. The studios are very important to many jobs and unique in many ways, as well as the hospitals, as well as looking at the small units and the rent stabilization issues, as well as looking at issues relating to what we do at the waste shed. So I thank you for this. And Enrique, every Thursday, I, well, Mr. Alacón, I just want to say this, when you spoke so eloquently about your daughter, I thought about my mother, because my mother was the greatest recycler. She was born during the Depression era, grew up in '16 and grew up, and she, everything, there was a drawer that had all the wirearound lettuce we used again and again and again. And so it's amazing how our elders, as well as our youth, know the right way. So this would be good, and I'm going to point... So this would be good, and I'm going to point back at Enrique now because I'm counting on you, I count on you every Thursday and every day of the week. I count on your crews today. They came out to Las Feliz Boulevard where they handled the matter there real quick. So this is an effort. We're going to have a lot of eyes looking at it, Mr. CAO, to try to make sure we do what's best for the people. And anyone who is a trash hauler, who's picked up trash, I want to thank you and as we move forward with this next step and looking at these issues as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you all for indulging in today's discussion. As I started off, this is saying this is a very important decision for the city of LA, but I do believe that if we move forward with an exclusive system, it's going to protect the environment, support workers, and also give us for the first time ever to have an ability to control costs and make sure they are equitable throughout the city. And that is something that, as we go back and look at the implementation plan and do the RFPs and the bids, I know we're going to be competitive and people are going to bid to ensure they provide the lowest cost possible for consumers as they move forward in this, in this new system. So with that, colleagues, let me ask that we, we're going to lose some members and some of them wanted to be here for this historic day. So let me ask that we, I suggest we approve Mr. Alakon's suggestion that we move all motions, which is C through P now, I think, back to committee because in fact, all of them touch upon the implementation plan. They all, in one way or another, affect each other in how we're going to look at a collective, comprehensive system. And so we'll take back the issue of exemptions for the film industry, for hospitals, and look at those thoroughly, methodically, and think about them, what they really mean for Los Angeles. Whether or not other cities have given exemptions to not, to them or not, is not important for us because we are a very different city. So we want to look at those intently amongst the other issues. The one motion that I do ask that we pull out and vote on today, Mr. President, if that's okay, a friendly amendment to Ms. Alakon's, is H, which provide, it's Mr. Englander's motion, motion which provides a citizens oversight advisory committee, but I would amend it to say that we will come up with six members of business, environmental, labor, and sanitation community and make, come up with the implementation plan. If that's a friendly amendment to... Okay. So we'll, and we'll, so we're sending all of them back to committee with the exception of H and Ms. Englander's motion on, on creating the citizens oversight advisory committee. And we'll come up with a membership for that.
Okay, Mr. Englander. Or did you want to ask a specific...
Mr. Weezer, if you could please repeat the, the categories.
Sure. And we're open, business, environmental, labor, and sanitation.
And can we specifically include the entertainment industry as, as a component of that as well? I know that's probably subsumed within business, but I think that it's important, given the specific concerns that they've expressed.
We can make that category as well, yes.
Thank you.
Why don't you get six categories? Add, add the Chamber of Commerce or somebody, make six.
Okay, okay. Wait, wait, wait now. Let's get some order here. Mr. Alakon.
Can we just delete six and come up with a, a figure that truly represents the interest...
Gotcha. But we will, we'll delete six, include entertainment in there.
We may include other interested parties, but I, I don't want to lock us into six.
Yeah, we, we'll delete the six. We won't...
Okay, that, that's fine. Mr. Englander.
Yes, no, thank you. And this is, this is a vibrant discussion, so I appreciate everybody weighing in on this. And it's one that for, will forever, whatever the outcome, change, historically changed the city of Los Angeles. And in looking at that, since we're about to vote on these, the committee report itself, most of these amendments have to actually do with the committee report. So sending most of these motions back and then taking a vote on the committee report without visiting all of the various motions that are going to amend that committee report, I'd just assume, take those positions up. And so I'd move that we go ahead and do that first and take each motion up independently so we can weigh in on what we're going to be voting on rather than burying it in committee. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Couple more questions for the department. The bulky items, will the franchise include that or will that still be the city's responsibility on bulky item pickup?
That's the city's responsibility.
That won't change from the current policy?
It will not change.
Okay? And in the event there is a work stoppage in one of the franchise areas, what would our backup be?
So the system will be designed in a way that that is considered. Other private haulers, assuming that we will have more than a few, will serve as backup to the others and city sanitation will always be the universal backup.
So, so let me just be clear. First line of defense, the best fleet in the city, the Bureau of Sanitation will be there to protect against work stoppage. The second line of defense, we're going to establish, separate and apart from the RFP system, for the 11 zones, an on-call list of emergency haulers. We are going to set very high standards for capacity of those haulers so as to ensure that they can mobilize immediately in 24 hours or 48 hours if necessary. That means haulers that have the ability to pull resources from other states if necessary so as to not allow for any, any stoppage of the collection of waste in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for a really good, thorough, detailed substantive policy debate. We should have more of these. And I appreciate that so many people have been so engaged in this for such a long period of time. I mean, this has been a discussion that's been going on for, for years now, really. And as we're getting closer to this point, I think, you know, sometimes emotions are running a little high, so I think it's time to take a little bit of a deep breath and realize that, you know, almost all of the goals that we're talking about are commonly shared by everyone in this room. We want to continue to increase the city's diversion rates. We want to reduce the number of truck trips, if possible, in the city in order to relieve our streets of strain and to improve air quality. We want to make sure that rates are affordable to consumers and stay so. We want to improve working conditions for people in this industry who have one of the toughest jobs anyplace. And we want to make sure that we guarantee good customer servants, service and efficiency in our, in our trash hauling. Those are all goals that everyone, I think, shares. Now, one of the reasons that I felt that it was especially important to have a full EIR prepared as part of this policy development process, and Mr. Weezer, I appreciate your confirmation of that today, and Mr. Salazar, you've previously confirmed that we will be moving forward on that. I appreciate that. Regardless of whether there is a legal mandate that we do, do so, we're going to do that because it's just good, smart policymaking to do that. Because most of the goals that I talked about, as far as I have seen from everyone that we've spoken to in this process and in our discussions with staff and otherwise, the diversion rates, the rate impacts, working conditions, customer service and efficiency, all of those issues are issues that could be dealt with in a non-exclusive franchise system through our RFA process. The one that I have the most question about is truck trip reductions. And everyone's presentation so far has failed to convince me, one way or the other, about whether we can actually reduce truck trips with either a non-exclusive franchise or an exclusive franchise. So that's why that must be studied as part of a full environmental impact report, so that it's not posturing by one side or the other, it's data prepared by environmental scientists. And that's what I, I want to get to. So, so thank you again for the confirmation that, that we're going to be doing that because that is critically important to our air quality and to the condition of our streets. We know the impact these vehicles have on our streets. Couple of things that I, I want to clarify. First of all, on Mr., I, I tend to agree with Mr. Englander on these amendments. We've all had lots of time to think about this. I think all of us have thoughts and input that we'd like to provide. I don't see why we have to refer these motions to committee. I, I'm prepared to go with them right now, and, and I think we should, particularly with regard to the entertainment industry protections that many of us are especially concerned about. So I, I intend to support Mr. Englander's motion to have a specific vote on those amendments today. But in the event that, that doesn't happen, I want to make sure that if those motions are referred to committee, they are also referred to the ad hoc, since the ad hoc was set up specifically for the purpose of reviewing this exact policy and the ad hoc committee should, should be able to weigh in. One final question for the moment, since I'm already over my time, but I'd like to ask the, the city attorney's office. We've, we've established, I think, through a number of questions that have been presented to the office, that the office has responded to with regard to the five-year notice, which is consistent with the argument I've made from the beginning, which is that when you go from a permit system, by the way, that's another thing we can all agree with. I think we all can agree with that, that the permit system now creates a status quo which is unacceptable and needs fixing. It, it is the Wild West out there and we do have to move forward with a better system. If we move forward with any alternative system that involves franchising, exclusive or non-exclusive, it does implicate the five-year notification rights that the haulers have, correct?
Good afternoon, Deputy City Attorney John Cabal. That is correct.
And, and so we've already given the five-year notice with regard to an exclusive, what we're calling an exclusive system with regard to multifamily and commercial. We haven't done so with a non-exclusive. We haven't provided that five-year notice and so we would have a five-year delay in implementing the types of mandated non-exclusive franchise agreement that are presented in the CAO's report.
That's not correct. The two notices that have been sent out so far, the one in 2006 for multifamily and the one in 2011 for commercial, those are applicable to either franchise system, whether a non-exclusive or an exclusive. Any exclusive means of providing trash hauling would be covered under either of those two notices. The notices didn't specify an exclusive franchise. The notices track the language of Public Resources Code 49520.
Okay.
Referring to exclusive solid waste handling services.
So at the expiration of those five-year periods, the council would have the opportunity to implement either version then?
Correct. July of 2013, you could go forward with a...
Last question, Mr. Krikorian, because you're way over.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your patience, Mr. President.
Correct. July 2013, the city could go forward with, with either franchise proposal, either exclusive or non-exclusive.
Okay. And in, in addition to those options, the city would have the option of a voluntary non-exclusive franchise that could be considered during that interim period as well.
Again, the commercial extends another four years, so yes, a voluntary franchise system, that would be, that would not implicate the five-year notice.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Perry.
I just wanted to, for the record, remind you, Mr. President, and any other colleagues, that I did make an oral motion to adopt the CAO report, so that cannot be sent back to committee.
Fine. Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, if I heard this correctly. Commissioner, you said that if there's a labor dispute, the first line of response would be the city's sanitation workers?
If there was a lapse in service, the first line of defense would be the Bureau of Sanitation. That doesn't necessarily mean complete work stoppage, but the first line of defense would be if there's a lapse in service, it would be the hauler. It would be incumbent upon the hauler, the, the franchisee to be responsive. If they fail to be responsive, the Bureau of Sanitation could send resources to respond in spot instances. If there is a larger issue with the hauler and they are unable to provide the services, that's when we would access the emergency on-call list of haulers.
Okay, I want to go back to that because I think the specific question maybe Mr. Labange asked specifically dealt with the work stoppage. And you said the first line of defense was going to be the city's sanitation. And so I just want to clarify...
So, so, yeah, so Councilmember Zine asked the question and so I'm clarifying now my response, in response to your question. Work stoppage issues are, would be larger concerns, which would require the mobilization of a large hauler to come in and be able to respond.
Okay. So the issue that we're dealing with is you're saying if it's a, basically a separation of something in service, you can go and get the city involved. But I just want to get back to the work stoppage because it would appear that if there are city employees, there are union employees, and most of those who might be applying for the franchises would be union employees, that they, your, your, by your statement, it appears, is setting a policy that they would cross that picket line?
No, I am absolutely not suggesting that. And so I want to, I will reiterate my position in response to Councilmember Zine's question. And, and so maybe I, I went a step too far in, in responding. But I'm going to be clear. If there is a labor dispute, a work stoppage as a result of a labor dispute, that's when we will access an emergency on-call hauler. That's, that's, that's on a list set forth by an RFP process. If there is, on the other hand, a service, a lapse in service that is, is much smaller in nature, the Bureau of Sanitation can help to offset that lapse in service. In either instance, though, costs for those services will then be handed over to the franchisee and they will be responsible for paying for those fees.
My final clarifying is that, again, getting to that point, that if you have a situation where you're saying the people are on the on-call list, that's different than people that have a franchise in another part of the city? Are they one and the same?
If I may, in my, if I may also help with the question and the response, and, and you know, we have had instances in other large cities, if you may recall, in Chicago, I want to say it was 12 years ago, and it was right before the DNC, the Democratic National Convention, the private haulers went on strike in the city of Chicago, and that went for two weeks, I believe. The ultimate responsibility to provide the service is by the city, the municipality. We're in, in essence, right now, like virtual the franchise, extending the right but not the responsibility. We still retain the responsibility, the city does. So in an event like that, there's a number of measures that the city will undertake. One of them, of course, could be activating the other private haulers, us coming in, as, as they almost did in Chicago. They, in fact, in many instances, the, the city forces in Chicago came in and provided the service as an interim. So there's a number of measures that will get activated, as well as penalties that will be triggered should there be a work stoppage. So all of those will be vetted in the RFP. Those are important considerations that must be thought through in the RFP.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Weezer. Mr. Englander.
Second, Ms. Perry's verbal motion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to call the question, please.
Okay.
What is your question?
Any objection? Seeing none. What is before us at this time, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, we have amending motions 14, C through R, C through R. We have Councilmember Alarcon, Alarcon's motion to send all amending motions to the Energy, Environment, and Ad hoc Waste Committee. We have Motion Englander, Perry to vote on each motion individually before determining whether to refer them to committee or not.
Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
If we were to vote on each individual item, there's no debate on those items, correct?
Uh, correct, sir.
So we would just vote them up or down?
Yes, sir.
Now, I would, a lot of the amendments have merit and I would hate to, to vote them down. Is there a way we could still send them? Okay, so it, so we would still have the opportunity to discuss them?
I, I would suggest if they're voted down today, the ones that are voted down, send them to committee.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's go through the list, Mr. Clerk, starting with the, the First Amendment. Mr. Alarcon, I'd like to make a request of you that you pull your motion because I want to vote on, on every one of these. I think that's just the best, that... Okay, so let's start going through these. Yes, Mr. Krikorian? I didn't hear you.
Point of order, just, just so that I'm clear on, on what we're doing. So we're going to, we're going to go through the, the amendments and if it is the bodies wish to vote no on the amendments and they don't pass here, then those will all be referred back to committee for further consideration.
I think that's the smart play. Some of them have merit, a lot of merit.
Nothing will be killed here today. Anything that's up for consideration will go back to, to committee. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Clerk, Mr. Weezer?
Mr. President, I, I don't, it, it would have, somehow have to be resurrected back in committee. I mean, if something doesn't pass here, it, it doesn't automatically go to committee. That is never the case in any motion. is never the case in any motion.
Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Attorney, let's let the city attorney respond to that.
That was a suggestion. It's certainly the council's discretion, what to do with motions that failed, either to put them in the dustbin or send them to committee.
Well, Mr. Weezer, I would recommend that we properly vet these in committee.
Yeah.
Some of them have, a lot of them have merit, and they bear discussion. So, I think there should be an agreement that we may defeat them today, but they'll be referred to the joint committee that you and Mr. Alarcon chair. Can we live with that?
Yes.
Okay, let's vote.
So, Mr. President, for clarification, that would be both the Energy and Environment and the Ad-Hoc Committee as well. Very good.
So, wait there, are we going to send them off?
C through R, sir, C through R.
Without a label on it, it does concern this matter.
It's item 14, sir.
It's the original item that was on the agenda. Yes, Mr. Parks?
Could I just ask one clarifying point? If all these are going to go to that joint committee, the E and N Committee's report is also there, could we ensure that it gets considered as part of these motions? Because there's an extensive committee report in which we spent several hours in committee on that issue.
Defer to the chairs?
It went to a joint committee or something.
I'm sorry, but it seems like we're ad hocly just making rules here, unless there's a vote or a process that would overrule the typical processes that we have. As I understand it, if there's a report in E and N Committee, if it gets referred to our committee by the clerk's office, then we will take it up. But it hasn't been referred to our committee. So, I would be happy to take it up. I'm just not sure we could ad hocly hearsay.
Yeah, we were told that it was, we had the committee. We asked it to be sent here when this was discussed, and we were told it was sent to the Ad-Hoc Waste Committee.
Mr. Alarcon.
Mr. President, with all due respect, I think we are really stretching the rules here. I don't believe we can amend, that essentially is amending a motion that is before us where we have already closed the discussion, and I think it is out of order.
Okay, well, it looks as though we're not going to be able to find a piece, so I want to go back to, the question has been called. I want to go back to what we were going to do initially, and the First Amendment, I believe, Mr. Clerk, that we would vote on would be the request by Mr. Alarcon to send all of these to committee. So, with that said, let's open the roll. Oh, I didn't see you, Mr. Parks.
I just want to clarify that there's no misunderstanding. Our committee report is already in the Ad-Hoc Committee. And all I'm saying is when they are looking at all these motions, that our committee report be a part of that review.
Well, let's, on this point, let's vote on this item, okay? We're voting now, Mr. Clerk. Is it on the, Mr. Alarcon?
The Alarcon Rosendahl motion to send all amending motions to both the Energy and Environment and Ad-Hoc Committee on Waste Reduction and Recycling.
Okay, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, five noes.
That's approved.
Now, what do we have left before us where it relates to this item?
Mr. President, now before you is item 14, or 14A, as it is listed on the agenda.
On this item, on this item, let us open the roll. Or, Mr. Weezer?
Adopting the E and E and Joint Ad-Hoc Report that adopts the exclusive with the implementation plan that will come back, and if I could make a friendly amendment to that, that will come back in 90 days to the full council.
On this item, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
Is there anything else before us where it relates to this item, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, there is not.
Englander wants to be no on both of those votes.
He was not no on both of those votes. If it doesn't change the outcome, can't we afford him that accommodation? Okay, I need a ruling from the city attorney. I mean, it's not going to change the outcome of the vote.
That's correct on both of those items.
Okay, so anyway, we're done with this issue. All right, thank you. It's been a long day so far. Okay, keep it down. Okay, now we'll move to item, item eight. It's my understanding, Mr. Reyes, you have an amendment on this item?
Yes, on number eight, we have a technical amendment, ask for an I vote. That's it.
Okay, Mr. Labange. Mr. Labange, you may want to pay attention. Are you ready to, okay, on item eight, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, next item?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number seven.
Mr. Englander.
I believe it's still like to move on the minority report, to move that to committee as well. I don't believe we did that. So, if we could still take a vote on the minority report, which was 14B, to move that back to committee as well, we'd still like to have that vote, or voted up or down, but--
Mr. President, that would need, for consideration, that would need a second.
Okay, I'm sure you, I'm sure you can get a second. Okay, so now, let's, Mr. Weezer?
Pardon me, sir. Prior to doing that, we'd first have to reconsider the entire item.
No, I'm not going to go through that, Mitchell. I'm not, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to do that now. We've already moved to another item, or we can vote, you know what, Mr. Clerk, why don't we vote on reconsideration? Members, I want you to hear me. I'm going to request a no. Okay, no on reconsideration. Okay, so let's move on. What's the next item? I need Mr. Labange. I believe, what, item seven?
Yes, sir. That brings us to item number seven.
Councilmembers, the commissioner nominee is not able to make it today, but she adds a new element to the Cultural Affairs Commission that I think is worthy of recognition, and that is that she's a producer and writer for soap operas in Los Angeles. And I think that is an important business in Los Angeles, and we want to keep it there, and we want to make sure that they have a prominent opportunity to be represented on the Cultural Affairs Commission. So, I would ask that we support her, notwithstanding her inability to come before council.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Okay, city attorney clarification, or the clerk, on the waste hauling item, I moved the--
What we have here is item seven right now. We're on seven. Hold on just a second, Ms. Perry.
I just want to make a point of order. Maybe we can do it after we take the vote on this item?
Yes. Let's take a vote on this item. No others, speakers on the cue on item seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. Next item, Ms. Perry?
Point of order from the city clerk or from the city attorney, I made a motion to move the CAO report. I needed clarification for the record on what was actually moved.
This is on another issue?
No, I just needed clarification. It's a point of order.
Mr. City Attorney, can you answer the question?
I just want a clarification for the record. I'm not asking for an action. I just want a clarification.
My understanding was all amending motions were referred to the joint committee, and that which included N, and your motion, which both dealt with the CAO report being sent back to the joint--
Both the majority and the minority report included in that. Did we vote on the majority or the minority report? Did we vote on the--
Yeah, 14A was the majority report. 14B was on the agenda, and it could only have been voted upon after there was a motion to substitute.
But there was no motion to substitute.
Correct.
So, if I'm correct in interpreting what you said, we voted on the majority report, but we did not, in fact, vote on the minority report. Is that correct?
Well, that is correct. And generally, what happens in that case is that matter is received and filed, if it's not voted upon.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. You got your answer right there. This is not an item on in front of us, right? Mr. Clerk, what's before us right now?
Mr. President, the only item remaining is item 25. It's an item scheduled for closed session.
Closed session. Mr. Alarcon?
I just want to ask, we go forthwith on item seven?
Forthwith on item seven. Thank you. Seeing that, and there's any, Mr. Clerk, we have public comment?
General public comment, sir.
General public comment right now. Dr. Williams, not here. Dr. Williams, again, not here. Richard Eastman, Richard Eastman, not here. James Shaw, James Shaw, not here. Melissa Baldwin, Melissa here? Melissa? Go ahead, Melissa.
Hello, everyone. I'm Melissa Ballen. And some of you might remember me from August 29th, when we came in to wish you a happy National Lemon Juice Day with celebrities RJ Mitty and his young sister, Lacey Ann Carrier, to remind you all that when life gives you lemons, we should make them into fresh juice. I'm also working on the I Am Vegetable campaign. Here in Hollywood, we think it's very important to support glorifying vegetables instead of violence, and you can find out more at I Am Vegetable. But today, I'm here to let you know that I'm a declared candidate for mayor. I've been in Angelino since birth. I'm the only filmmaker on the ballot. I do need 1,000 of your signatures to make the ballot, and I would like to challenge all candidates. I know I'm approaching my time, but I think it's very important that we restore Los Angeles to its glory and reprioritize the needs of our people. I can tell you that $1 could feed 10 children, hungry children, in the city of Los Angeles and around the world through No Kid Hungry. So, Team Ballen for Mayor is going to be raising funds through nokidhungry.org. We'd like to show exactly how far a campaign dollar really can go, and we'd like to challenge our very good candidates, some of whom have already raised up to $2 million for their campaign. We ask not to have another Romney shambles, and we please ask to see the dollars go back into the city of Los Angeles. So, join us. You don't have to donate to Team Ballen for Mayor. You can donate yourself, but please donate at least $1 to ending hunger. Let's show Los Angeles what's really important to us, stopping violence against women and children, ending hunger.
Thank you very much. All right. There's no other public comment cards, no other cards. We don't have cards. So, I'm going to call for the executive session, the next item. Sergeants, would you clear? There's no other cards here. I have no other cards. Sir, would you see the, Mr. Hernandez, will you get the card, pass it to the sergeant? Pass it to the sergeant.
It just takes one cup.
Every year, thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play, and a safe haven like Hollaback Pines.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
Open up the chambers. Are there any announcements? Get ready. Yeah, see it, see it, you got it. Good afternoon again, we're back in session after executive session. Are there any announcements, members?
Excuse me, Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered, Alan, thank you very much.
The desk is clear.
Desk is cleared. Any announcements? No announcements, any adjourned motions? Please rise for adjourned motions. Okay, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Colleagues asked that we adjourn in memory of Enrique Gonzalez, who was born February 14th, 1972, and he passed away on November 5th. He was a kind, loving father and leaves behind two children, Christina, who's 16 years old, and Enrique, who's 12 years old. He was a beloved brother to teacher Elvira from Tiny Dots Child Care Center in the Caltrans building. He was a hardworking man who loved to spend time with his family. He left this earth too soon, but will live on forever in the hearts of his family and friends. He's survived by his son Enrique and daughter Christina.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Perry.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. As I said yesterday, I would do a more extensive adjourned motion in memory of Wilbur K. Wu. And his son, Mike, our former colleague, sent over some additional biographical information and asked that I share with all of you in memory of his father. Wilbur K. Wu played a central role in the development of the first Chinese-American-owned bank in the United States and was known for his decades of leadership in the Chinese-American community. He died at the age of 96 on November 12th, 2012. The vice-chairman emeritus of the Los Angeles-based Cathay Bank, Wilbur was born December 12th, 1915, in a tiny village near Guangzhou in the southern Chinese province of Guangdong. He came to Los Angeles at age five. At 12, his father sent him back to Guangzhou to be immersed in Chinese language and culture. In 1940, after two years at Lingnan College, now part of Sun Yat-sen University, he returned to Los Angeles to complete his education at UCLA. Like many immigrants, he found humbling work here, washing dishes in a small Chinatown restaurant. He also taught at Chinese language schools in the evenings and was popular with his students, who decades later would pay their respects to their teacher whenever they saw him in the community. During World War II, he worked as a translator in the Office of Postal Censorship, rising to chief of the Technical Operations Division. After the war, he graduated from UCLA with a degree in business administration and went to work with his father managing Chungking Produce Company, which thrived under their leadership for 40 years, supplying restaurants and grocery stores with Chinese vegetables and other produce. The business was sold in 1990 when Wilbur and his wife Beth retired. In 1962, at a time when mainstream banks would not make loans to many ethnic Chinese, Wilbur joined Cathay Bank as a vice president. With a knack for community outreach, he played an instrumental role in the bank's growth over the next decades, ensuing decades, and rose to senior vice president, administrative vice president, and executive vice president. Fluent in both Chinese and English, Wilbur was at ease in both cultures, which enabled him to fill a crucial role as a bridge builder during the 1960s and ensuing decades, as the local Chinese-American community assumed a larger role on the local and national civic stage. In 1985, his son Michael followed his father's example and became the first Asian-American elected to the Los Angeles City Council. Wilbur also served as an overseas Chinese representative to Taiwan's national legislative body and was a member of the California World Trade Commission and California Commission for Economic Development. He was an organizer and convener of the World Chinese Bankers Convention, held in Los Angeles in 1998, and that year, he was named as one of the 20 most powerful men in Los Angeles by Los Angeles Magazine. In 1996, Wilbur became the first Asian-American to be honored by UCLA with the Neil H. Jacoby International Award, which annually recognizes business and civic leaders who promote understanding of international relations. In 2001, he and his wife endowed the annual Wilbur K. Wu Greater China Business Conference at the UCLA Anderson School of Management, with the goal of promoting understanding of the economic ties between the Greater China region and the United States. He is survived by his wife of nearly 75 years, Beth, four children, Patricia, Michael, Elaine, and Pamela, six grandchildren, and seven great-grandchildren. A daughter, Janice, passed away in 2008. His burial will be private, and a public memorial will be announced soon.
Thank you, and I know how proud he was of his son, Michael, and I know they lived in our neighborhood, so we remember Wilbur Wu. Any other adjourned motions? Mr. Zine, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Rose Ann Henry passed away November 5th. Rose Ann Henry was born January 8th, 1928, on a farm in central California that is now part of Travis Air Force Base. She moved to San Francisco, received her bachelor's degree and teaching credential from San Francisco College for Women. Had 25-year career with the San Francisco Unified School District, taking off only to raise two children, Mary, who passed away in 2009, and Tom Henry of our city family. Through her life, she volunteered for numerous civic, charitable, and church organizations in the San Francisco area. She died peacefully due to complications from COPD, died near her surviving family in Glendale, California, at the age of 84. Tom Henry has been a great part of our city family. He works in the planning department, he was my former planning director. Our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family during this time of loss. May she rest in peace, survived by Tom Henry and daughter-in-law Sue and their two children, Rose and Henry. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.